I think I have some building committee. Oh, no, that was last week.
It being seven o'clock PM on Monday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, I'll call this regular meeting of the Gardner's School Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mrs. Carmier is absent. Mrs. Hurst.
Present.
Mr. LaFreniere.
Present.
Mrs. Layton.
Present.
Mrs. Bellavon.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
Mark Pellegrino.
Present.
And Geno D'Vigo, student rep, is absent.
Thank you very much. Can you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is open time for the general public. Is there anyone from the general public who wishes to be heard this evening? Seeing none, moving on to item C, recognitions by the superintendent for the student council's fall and spring representatives from Gardner Elementary.
Excellent. So this is always a very fun time for the superintendent because I get to call up some very, very dedicated students to Gardner Public Schools. And these are students from our Elm Street Student Council. And there are a number of students that I don't mind, would Beth, do you mind coming on up?
Sure.
Beth, Beth Teta.
Yeah.
Why don't you come on up too? So this is Beth, if we're, just so everybody's aware, this is Beth Teta and Corey Tofczynski, two phenomenal guidance councils at Elm Street School, but also the co-advisors for our student council at Elm Street School. So some of the things, actually, you know what? I want you, would you mind talking about some of the things that you guys have done this year? Because I think you get so passionate about it, so I'd really like that, people would like to hear from you.
Absolutely. We were fortunate to have such a great group of leaders. Every time we had a meeting, every time we needed something done, their hands went up automatically, hands went up. We had to, we had to sometimes draw numbers and names because we had so many hands go up to volunteer. We did a holiday gift drive to benefit the CAC. We had over two hundred gifts donated. We did a food drive that also benefited the CAC. We cleaned, I have my cheat sheet here. We cleaned and decorated the auditorium for the holiday show. You guys did an incredible job. Mrs. Blackwood, thank you for organizing all those books for the second grade bookshop. They filled hand sanitizer for the entryway bottles. They made posters for events. They made thank you cards for people. Oh, and then there's lost and found. Anyone watching this, if you have a child who's lost anything, there are tables of things. Send them to lost and found. These lovely people have been folding and organizing things. We did a tour of City Hall and had pizza lunch with Mayor Nicholson. We, they attended meetings every Thursday, they wore their shirts. We laminated some PBS reward tickets, we sharpened pencils for MCAS, and I think we might have the grounds cleanup coming up. So those were some of the things that they did, and they, like I said, incredible leaders.
Yeah, the cheat sheet, just to let you know that she was referring to has about fifteen or twenty items listed on our cheat sheet, just because you guys have done so much. And every time I visit the school, I see someone walking around with a big smile on their face, and you have your shirts on, and you're, and you're always willing to greet me, which is really nice. But also, you're always doing work, and that's really nice to see leaders taking charge of the school and helping us, make sure we're, leading us into the future. And hopefully, you'll be leaders going forward every year. So with that said, maybe we can call some of our students up here, and we can pass out the.
Yeah, well, they're.
Right, starts with Ian.
You can start with either one, because there, there's some spring and some fall.
Okay.
So this is the fall group.
Okay. So when your name's called, would you mind just coming up and shaking hands with both your co-advisors, and then coming up and shaking hands with me? And then we're gonna take a group photo afterwards, outside with the mayor and anyone else who'd like to be in the photo. Okay, you wanna call?
Annie Owens, come on up.
Great job.
Or Radiosia. Kelly Amber, come on up.
And if you want to walk.
Bargree Flair, come on up. Big Green is not here. Emma Holley, come on up. Let's see. Kenya Wheeler is not here. Sophie Boudreaux is not here. Deja Lys Fernandez is not here. Pierre Murnier is not here. Isis Kimitin, come on up.
You can do a great prepared. So you guys, so you take this certificate with your left hand, and you shake with your right, because you guys are gonna probably be doing this a lot over the years, so just so you know how to do it.
All right, I'm just gonna read a few more names because they're not here, but I wanna make sure that they're recognized. Emmett Eld, Geno Rivera, Bryson Gonzalez, Yusaf George, Olivia Warner, Sierra Guzman, Angelina Rios, Noah Lucier, Olivia Kaiser, Ariela Kavasis, Kyle Worchit, come on up.
Superintendent's behind as usual.
Too many papers.
There we go, Kyle. Great job.
Natalie Plant is not here. Sabrina LeLain. Marjorie Gordon is not here. Gavin Lucier is not here. Real Denovia is not here. Josh Aguilera is not here. Clarissa Fernandez is not here. Chelsea Eglin is not here. And Eliana Layton, come on up. I think it's the one right. Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, great.
So a quick note, I would just like to recognize these two folks, though. Both Corey Tofczynski and Beth Teta have been, you know, an integral part of Elm Street School for a long time, leading a group, but I did wanna recognize that Beth Teta will be leaving us and retiring this year. So this is her last year with us as, she's been a guidance counselor twenty-eight years now?
Twenty-eight years.
Twenty-eight years, and twelve or thirteen now as the, as the co-adviser?
Yes, since two thousand and ten.
So, working as a, as a co-adviser. So she's been with us a long time, and we want, should congratulate, congratulate her on her retirement and for leading the group, and I'm sure Corey will continue the, the tradition.
Thank you.
So if we could just get a quick photo op right out here, guys, I'd love to, I have my picture taken.
We'll take a quick recess. Any of the committee members who wanna join in, feel free. All right, the school committee meeting will come back to order at seven thirteen PM. We'll go to item D on our agenda, the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mrs. Ward Layton to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next item, subcommittee reports, facilities, subcommittee, Mr. LaFreniere. Oh, Mr. Schwartz, sorry.
Facilities committee met on April fourteenth, and we met at the Alama Sada School. It's quite an experience to go back to that school in a locker room and remember what it was like. Mr. Anderson provided us a copy of his project list that he uses in conducting various projects in the school district. And something I've been talking about before, that the S two building excess upgrades is in process. And it's sort of a touchy one where he has to, we have to coordinate with Johnson Controls and the vendor that put in the system so that we can secure one building at a time and not set up a whole system. So that's, it's sort of, it's still in progress. The antifreeze, I've talked about two or three times already, the middle school is done, and the high school is in, is in process. We talked, I talked about the Landry Auditorium before. It's all done. Those of us that attended the high school musical, we were able to use the auditorium, and all that remains are the walls and the ceiling. And Mrs. Bolger would like to have it done before the spring concerts take place, which I believe, I think around the seventeenth or so.
Next week.
And we just hope and pray that Mr. Anderson will be able to meet that objective. Work on the high school athletic fields continues. Vendors are working very hard and trying to bring them back to, back to life again. I'm getting reports that they're looking better and better. So that'll be, that's a continued and progress project. And I don't remember if I mentioned this before, but on Watkins Field, Ty and Bond has been contracted by the school district to come up with plans for bathrooms and concession facilities for Watkins Field. That was something that should have been done early on, but we just ran out of money. Exterior lighting, it's completed at the high school and then in process at the middle school. On the facility side, Mr. Anderson and crew and the DPW will be repairing, replacing the water main in the facilities garage. That should be done by now, was scheduled for April thirteenth. The contract for the student lockers has finally been signed and submitted, with the delivery and installation during the July and August period. Looking forward to see that. And we had suggested to Mr. Anderson that on the dividing wall panels at the middle school, that if you notice that some of the fabric has been torn off, and we have requested that the torn fabric sort of be evened off and tried to paint it with a matching color until the fabric can be replaced, and it won't look so terrible as it does now. In your packet, you noticed a picture of drain, drain pipes. You might say, well, who dropped those? Well, they went dropped. They were found that way, installed, and the reason why we had to do something about it, because now they were leaking rather profusely. And I think it has to do with the age of the pipe and age of the building, which is now a little over twenty-five years old. And it seems, in my opinion, strictly my opinion, they don't make that cast iron pipe like they used to when I was very young. And that's only, was only on one floor, so we have two other floors to worry about. And Mr. Anderson is certainly monitoring that, and those pipes will be replaced as needed. And it just shows you that as the building ages, the need for maintenance increases. Summer school will be at Waterford Street School this year. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartz, and we will note that the painting in the auditorium actually began earlier this afternoon, today. So hopefully, that is done by the concert, which is taking place next week. Next item, the finance subcommittee, Mr. LaFreniere.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The finance subcommittee met on Thursday, May fifth. The committee reviewed the expense report. It was noted that lines appear and negatives will have transfers made to cover them with existing funds. Gas and electric counts were noted as being higher than budgeted, which has been followed all year, but there are funds, there are funds to cover. It was noted that the utilities have been hard to budget due to changes over the past few years in usage. COVID had a lot to do with that also. See, projects around the district, we've already commented on a few, Landry Auditorium project is still underway. Painting is occurring, as we said earlier. Athletic fields, the work on the athletic fields is mostly complete. Watkins Field bathrooms and concession plans are being updated with hope to bid soon, with work being done during the summer. Completion is hopeful by the year end, and we hope to have something usable by Thanksgiving. We discussed the student staff meal pricing. The committee reviewed the projections regarding school lunch in shortfalls that would exist at the current price levels and current reimbursement rates. Discussion has, was, had that there will be the, to be a price, there will have to be a price increase. Let's see. As we don't know if there will be state or federal funding for free lunch again. There is funding in the House budget currently for it, so the committee decided to wait and vote on possible increase at the June meeting. So as that, more of that information comes in about reimbursement and, and, you know, the funding and all that, we decided just to put it off until we get all that information. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns on either of those reports? Moving on, our student advisory representative is not with us today, so we'll move past item F to item G. Item number three, four, zero, six, second reading of policies, Mrs. Hurst.
We have two policies that for second read, DJ purchasing and JEB entrance age. We need a motion to accept those.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Attorney Pallaven, seconded by Mr. Schwartz, to send these policies to their second and final printing. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item number three, four, zero, seven, COVID nineteen update, Dr. Pellegrino.
Just a quick update, you know, we have seen an uptick in, in numbers right now of, at the middle school, there was, there was an uptick, and right now at Gardner Academy, there was an uptick in numbers. Nothing to be too alarming. I know Becky sent you the most recent numbers. You know, we're on top of it. We're still doing our due diligence, and things are still running smoothly, and Becky's been wonderful about things, and this has actually pushed us to make sure that we have everything ready for next year as well, because you never know what's gonna happen.
Questions, comments, concerns? Moving on, item number three, four, zero, eight, kindergarten numbers and summer school update, Dr. Pellegrino.
So our kindergarten update is, right now, we have a hundred and five students. Typically, we have around two hundred. A hundred and five is actually a high number for, before summer hits. So usually, we get, we have fifty to seventy students when summer hits, and then in August, just before, just before we open school, that's when we have an onslaught of applications. So we're actually, and I will say, this is all due to the staff at Waterford Street School really doing all they can to solicit applications, get, get the word out that it's time to apply, get your applications in for kindergarten. So we're in a very good position, but we don't know what the number will end, it will end up being in the end. For summer school, we are ready to go, and we have our classes set up, and things are moving forward very well, quite frankly. It will be our last summer school at Waterford Street School, but the rooms are ready and will be all set.
Any questions? Mr. Schwartz.
On kindergarten, I think we're anticipating five classrooms?
Yes.
Do you think we might go to six, or can we go to six?
Right, if we go to, to add a, to add another teacher, would, would, would be that we have over two hundred. Right now, we have nine teachers. A couple of years back, you know, Mr. Martin advocated for that ninth kindergarten class, and I think that was a good move because it reduced class sizes to averaging just under twenty for us. So we're expecting to still be right around that. It would need to go over twenty-four as an average class size in order to add another teacher, so I don't think we'll be there.
That's good that we have as many as we do now, so early on, so that's good. Thinking about, hope it doesn't expand, but we'll accept it.
Yeah, it's the, the Dibble scores, the, the reading scores that we're, we're getting are off the charts. So clearly, we're doing a lot of the right moves, you know, we're doing a lot around the curriculum, and again, this is all, you know, teacher-driven, and they're doing a great job getting the kids to learn, and I think part of that has to do with the smaller class size.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to item number three, four, zero, nine, appointment to Keystone and CAPS collaborative? Attorney Pallaven?
I move that we appoint Superintendent Pellegrino to the Keystone, and I guess we have to do is two separate motions, one for Keystone and then one for CAPS to appoint you as the representative?
One and same.
Okay.
Nope, the, the two different, there are two different boards, but I think you can do it in one motion, I would think.
Okay, I'll appoint you to be the representative on both of those.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Attorney Pallaven, seconded by Mr. Schwartz, to appoint Dr. Mark Pellegrino to the boards of the Keystone and CAPS collaborative. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Pellegrino.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, four, one, zero, superintendent goals presentation, Dr. Pellegrino.
So, you know, I didn't wanna do a big presentation, and I'll, I'll put this, this information in, in next month's packet, but I did email this to you tonight. Just quickly going over some of my goals. Goal one was about district improvement, and this, again, falls along, as you all know, falls along with the superintendent evaluation. My first goal was to increase and improve school and family partnerships and, and improve our culture, and create a culture of dignity in the schools. We've done a lot of work around this, and again, I have teams of people working on this. With family engagement, we've actually participated in the state-sponsored family engagement seminars, and it's really laid some wonderful groundwork for us to gather the information and for next year to move forward, using our voice surveys that we do each year and actually improving those voice surveys, so we get more and better feedback from, from parents. That will greatly help, but how we'll be doing things going forward is going to drastically change, and your family engagement is not just about having, having people over for parent nights or for fun events. It's engaging families in, in their children's education, and that looks very different than what we've been doing, so I wanna really dive deep into this. So I think we have the groundwork for that. Our equity work has been moving, moving right along in terms of creating that culture, a culture of dignity, so every, every person that walks through our doors feels welcome, safe, and included in our community. And that's all kind of outlined in here. We did create our social justice committee for the, for the district, and all we're looking at is disparities when it comes to students with special needs, students in regards to their race, or students because of their income, their. their race, or students because of their income, the language they speak, or they're, if they're part of the LGBTQ community. So we're looking at all of those things and trying to find either disparities and things in practices that we need to, that we need to change and improve, so all students, again, have equitable outcomes in terms of what they get out of school, out of, out of Gardner Public Schools. Also, I was focusing on reducing the equity and discipline and dropout rates. Interestingly, there was a disparity when it came to students with special needs in 2020, which was the year, right? That was the year we hit COVID. And so we lost a lot of students, and apparently there was, that was throughout the state, I'm not sure about the country, but I know throughout the state, we lost a lot of students. So we had twenty-two students drop out that year, which is a lot of students. We've, because we've been working very hard to, to make those numbers smaller. So I set this goal up with that in mind. You know, fortunately, when we saw our 2021 numbers, that got cut in about half. We had thirteen students last year that, who dropped out of school. This year, we're looking at no more than really six. So again, we've been working very hard developing those multi-tiered system of supports throughout the district, looking at kids that are at risk, and making sure that if students need individual plans to, for us to out, to create supports, to provide outreach, and to engage them, we're doing all that we can. And this goes, this goes for discipline as well. Discipline with, we really, we really have not had for a few years now, disciplined disparities in terms of race. We've been able to overcome that in terms of suspensions. Where we do have disparities is students with disabilities. Students with disabilities are still, and so we've been working on this, and we've reduced our, our numbers, and there weren't any disparities in terms of suspensions this year. We're not looking at any disparities, but in terms of being sent out of class, when you dig a little deeper, being sent out of class is the prelude to suspensions. Students with special needs are sent out of class one and a half times more often than a student with, without special needs. So that's an area where we still need to reduce that particular disparity, and we're doing a lot of work, and that's what MTS is, is all about. So that number is actually lower than it has been in the past, where it was double the rate. So we've made some improvements. I'd like it, I'd like to see there be no disparities for any of our subgroups, so. And in terms of MTSS, my, my team has done a phenomenal job in making sure that we have a very robust system. Next year, I'll be, be going over this in a much more formal presentation, Kathy and I will be going over this. But the system that we created this year, frankly, is, it's, it's why we're being asked to speak at conferences throughout the state. It is basically whenever, whenever the state comes in and says, what are you doing about whatever it is? We talk about MTSS and how our system addresses it, because MTSS is how we do school. And we have all these, you know, all these teams, and I can, we finally came up with a visual that shows this. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of districts that we can really follow, because we're kind of, we're, I, I, I want to modestly say that our district is leading the state right now. I don't know anyone else who has the kind of robust program that we have in our schools, and the groundwork is laid for really moving things forward, sustaining and improving, sustaining and improving. Because I think that's the thing that we lacked when we didn't have this kind of system. It was always, we'd work on something, and it was like a spinning plate, would work on this, would get that plate spinning, then would work on this. This plate would slow down, and eventually have too many plates spinning, and something drops. And our goal is to create systems. Now we have a distributed leadership model, where we have teacher leaders, we have empowered teachers with a formal leadership role, with training, with Lynch Leadership Academy, Boston College, as well as professional development, you know, right in our, our school district. So when they're leading their teams, they know what we're really trying to do is perform, again, eliminate inequitable outcomes for our students, and make sure every student feels welcome, safe, and included in our, in our school system. So there's been a lot of work around that, both in terms of SEL, social emotional learning, as well as the academic supports. So and I'm really excited about, you know, our next step for the academic program, so. And with that, the last thing that I want to say is we've been participating in the Lynch Leadership Academy, which was my professional practice goal. And I say we, so, you know, through the grants that we secured for $250,000 a year, it's the regional grant that we're spearheading, it includes Fitchburg, Lemonster, and Winchton as well. We now have the Lynch Leadership Academy working with not only our assistant principals and principals, which is, has been their main focus, but because of our work with them, they're actually starting to work with us as a district office, because they're realizing how important the district's role can be in moving the schools forward. So Joyce West, Courtney Dunn, Kathy Gogan, and Amber Cassavant, who's our lead BCBA, we're a leadership team, and we meet weekly, and we meet with the Lynch Leadership Academy, and we, and, not every week, they meet with us once a month. And they talk to us about what are our goals, and so we have common goals and common expectations for our principals and for our administrators. So we're pushing them as well, because quite frankly, they're the driving force in the school. If the, if the principals not making sure it gets done, it easily falls by the wayside. So they're the ones that are in charge of the systems within their school. So it's important that we, that we have buy-in from them, and that we're training them and holding them accountable for the, the goals that we have. So I've been really excited about that, and that has been better than I thought it would ever be. So, those are, that's a quick overview of what I sent you. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call. I'm, I'm happy to sit down with you at any point, over the phone or in person.
Any initial questions, comments, concerns to the committee? Mrs. Wardley?
Who is doing the equity audit for the school? Do you have someone in particular?
No, right now, well, we, we do have someone that we, that we, we like, by the same token, we'll put out an RFP.
Okay.
So the group that we, we originally looked at, actually wrote, literally wrote the book that we did a book study on in our so, social justice group, which is on creating a, creating a culture of dignity. And it's, the, the lead, the lead person's name is Crown Apple, and he literally wrote the book on, that we actually followed a few years back, and you probably don't, I'm sure you all remember my presentation on the cultural proficiency and what we did there, but he actually also wrote that book on, on leading teams to, to become culturally proficient. So, Crown Apple, K-R-O-W-A. Yeah, so, and we'll put out the RFP, but it'll be based on creating a culture where all students feel welcome, safe, and included.
Mrs. Hurst?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as a disability advocate for more than thirty years, these are the types of things with special education and the inclusion of students. The social emotional learning has been stuff that I and many other parents have been advocating for, for many, many years. And I am thrilled to see this coming to fruition, finally. And everybody has really done a lot of work to make this happen, and I just think people need to know the history, too, that, you know, that this has been a long time coming. And, and as a special ed surrogate parent, there are a lot of districts who don't do anything like this. So we are lucky to have the dedicated people that we have.
Any other questions, comments, concerns so far? Thank you very much. Moving on, item number three, four, one, one, curriculum coordinators update, this was included in your packet for information. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Item number three, four, one, two, grant administrators update, this was included in your packet for informational purposes. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
More money coming in.
Exactly.
Thanks for calling.
Item number three, four, one, three, special education update, this was included in your packet for information purposes. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Item number three, four, one, four, CPAC update, this was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Mrs. Hurst?
I just want to say that the woman that we thought might be stepping up, her, things are changing for her child, so you, you need to be a parent of a special needs child or someone who's receiving services to be the, an elected per, or an appointed person for the PAC. So Joyce is having a parent training on the 25th, and she was hoping to be able to have some time at the end to hopefully, you know, entice some people into maybe stepping up. So, that's where that's at. Joyce, do you have anything?
No, no, it's unfortunate, kind of with the change of parent and not being able to take the role, but I'm sure it'll still be active.
You said that it was, you're doing a training for, or you did do a training, is that what you said?
She's going to be doing a training on the 20, a parent training on the 25th.
Yeah, specific to autism, but we're going to send a letter open up.
Any other comments? Moving on, item number three, four, one, five, the new school building project update, Dr. Pellegrino.
On time and on budget, I'm really, I'm really excited about that.
The drone footage? You forgot about that.
I, I do have, oh, I do have the drone footage. I'm sure, you know what? I don't know if we can turn it.
The US, the adapter from HDMI.
I, I do have it. I did forget. Yeah, there's some phenomenal drone footage that we, that we put up.
I think you guys had it on Facebook already and stuff, too.
I did see it on Facebook.
Yeah, they, they do, they do a nice job. You know, we're still planning for, you know, we're hoping for the best, planning for the worst. Right now, things seem to be, you know, on track. Technology, you know, is the, is the one holdup in terms of perfection and, and knowing that everything's right on, right on time, but we're still expecting to be packed up by June 15th, and to be ready to, to move in by July 15th. So, we're really excited.
Maybe we can put that drone footage on the website? Somewhere on the K-12?
Absolutely, yeah, yep.
Maybe easier for someone to find if they don't.
She might have put it on under, I know she did it on Facebook, and usually she does that as an update, but I'll check. Because, yeah, it's a quick little update that would be easy to do. Good idea.
Yeah, it even has interior pictures.
Yeah, it was, it was cool. It's so great to, to see the, the progress.
Any other comments? Moving on to item H, communications, Dr. Pellegrino.
No, I just think it was, first off, great to, to see Beth and to recognize her, and of course Cory Tofczynski as well, and, and those kids, it's just, that's really, that's just a really positive thing to see. Things have been going very well in the schools. MTSS is going great, and we're very excited, excited about that. Now we're planning, I do plan on putting out a communication about start times sometime next week, to make it more official in terms of, so parents can start to plan for next year, and our teachers as well can, can plan for next year. So, that's about all I have right now.
All right. Item I, final comments of the school committee members, Mrs. Wardley?
Just kind of echoing the same thing, just really happy to see all the positive things that are happening. And I did want to mention, last week, the Gardner Elementary School PTO put on an art show, and it was huge. It was busy for the full three hours that I was there, and I know that there was a lot of funds raised to kind of pad the account next year, so that when we opened the new elementary school, we have some resources available to do fun events for the kids. And just a big shout out to Misty Torres, who, and Kelly Perkins, who, it was kind of like their baby to put this together. And it was really cool. It was very cool. There were a lot of really good raffle baskets, there were bikes, and a lot of parents donated a lot of money for their kids' artwork, which is very cool, so. And the photo booth was a really big hit. It was just like a sheet with just like a bunch of like random props we found, and it turned out to be a really, really big hit, so, you know. That's all.
Mrs. Hurst?
I just wanted to congratulate the guidance counselors and all the students who are here tonight. It, it is just, it makes me feel so good to see kids being involved and, and taking initiative, and, you know, they're going to be our future leaders, and that's, it's very impressive what's, what's been going on. I also did want to mention that May is Mental Health Month. You know, don't, don't ever think that it can't happen to you or someone you know, any, you know, people kind of suffer in silence. I lost my brother, what, about seven years ago now, to suicide, and don't be one of those people who says, I never, I never saw it coming. Because there's things you can do, there's resources out there, and people are not going to reach out to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Palavan?
I also wanted to thank the Elm Street School Student Council. My daughter was a part of it, so obviously I know about all the little projects they did. It was amazing how much they got to do. I think they met for like an hour, maybe, I think it was every other week, and it was amazing what they accomplished in that short time period. And also, I did attend the art gallery last week, and it was amazing to see how many parents were there. I mean, it was packed for the people walking around purchasing the art. And I think it was a great idea, and hopefully we can do it, may, hopefully yearly would be nice, because I think it's something that, you know, it's neat for the kids to go and to see somebody pay for something they created, too. I think it really gave them a sense of worth that way, so. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
I'm looking forward to the 26th of April, and I'll be attending the Special Olympics on Watkins Field. Looking forward to that. Yeah, 26th of April. Special Olympics.
Of May.
May.
Oh, May.
Of May, excuse me. Well, the 26th.
Yes.
I hope those kids don't lose their ambition to volunteer. As they'll get older, they'll be interested in other things, but I just hope the momentum keeps going, and it's great for them to do all that volunteering. Thanks for Semen Paper and Gallic Industries for donating $5,500 each to junior, senior prom. We haven't had a prom for a couple of years, so it's, it's great to see the train rolling down the track again. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Lefrenia?
I'd just thank the Elm Street School Student Council, that was really nice to see and motivating, I think, you know, see those that young, and all they're doing is great. Hopefully it does continue. And I know Rachel didn't make it here tonight, but if she's watching, just let her know she's got some homework. A stack of things to sign. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefrenia. On my end, I also want to thank the Elm Street School Student Council for coming tonight. It was great to have that pizza lunch with them the other day, too. They went through a list of twenty-two questions that they had previously prepared beforehand, so they, they were very thoughtful in those questions, too, I'll say that. And it's nice to see them getting involved. Just to give people an update as they're planning their commute to and from school, we did have to adjust our paving schedule to a more condensed season this year due to gas prices and our contract expiring at the end of June, which would cause the prices to go up further. For us, we were locked in at a lower rate, but where that ends at the end of the fiscal year. So Pearl Street began to be milled today, and between milling, structure raising, and paving, the work on Pearl Street will be completed by May 19th. Central Street, West Line, West, and Menadnock will have work done between May 23rd and May 31st. Parker Street, West Street, and Menadnock will be paved on June 1st, and Willand Avenue will have work done between June 13th and June 17th. So that's a lot more condensed than we normally have our paving season. In our main streets, at least, there is some others that are happening after that, but where the price of asphalt for us is going up forty percent on July 1st. We're trying to get as much done before the end of the fiscal year.
How much did it go up?
About forty percent.
Oh, my God.
So, we tried to get as much done as we could before the end of the fiscal year. I do want to say congratulations to all of our alum who are graduating from college over the next couple of weeks here. It is college graduation season, so remember that if you are watching this, you can come home to Gardner after you graduate college. We do have a lot more to do here. And I want to thank the thirty to forty volunteers from Gardner High School who helped in the citywide leader, litter, excuse me, litter cleanup this past weekend. It was great to see so many of our students out, not only just around the schools, but also on Rear Main Street and several other different places across the city there, too. It was really a nice thing to see the younger generation of our city getting involved like that and having that be the example for other people to follow in the community. A couple of different financial things. I did go to Boston today for the governor's new forward bill, is what it's being called. It's partially the Economic Development Bond Bill, but in the $3.5 billion in ARPA funding that the state is allocating in there, there's also increased funding for innovative pathways and early college programs that we'll be looking at as those move forward. The, I also do plan to put up the money for the Snack Shack bathroom. I also do plan to put up the money for the Snack Shack bathrooms, or at least a substantial portion of that at the June City Council meeting, too. So that should be coming there. And the city budget will also be presented to the city council for that first June meeting as well, with the school budget here in the workplace. So there's a lot going on, and we've got a great rush to the end of the year. And with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Mr. Lefrenier, seconded by Mr. Schwartz. All in favor say aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, and we'll see you next month.